Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, it looks like we have a light agenda tonight. First thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, additions they want to add or due to the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved for nothing. First on the agenda, I assume Ken, this is yours?
Yes, I'll provide you kind of a summary overview. So first of all, I have to thank Mary Jo for actually putting together and keeping track of the stats all year long.
Well, should we have Mary Jo do this?[58.12][58.12](laughter) No, God. One of these days.[62.51][62.51](laughter)
So without her keeping track of this, it would be a hard time to give you this report so quickly right away here in January. So again, this is just a summary that we do every meeting in January, usually at the second meeting, giving all the growth statistics for the previous year in terms of building permit activity that we had. Overall, you'll note that the activity for building permits was down from 2014 to 15. Couple of the key things to note here, we had a decrease in nine less homes that were constructed in 2015 at 21. Year previous, in 2014, we had 30 new homes built. We actually did have a few homes that were actually reviewed, issued, or ready to be issued and sitting there. And I know one of them particularly got picked up literally the first week of the new year here. So, you know, we had a few more that could have showed up in 15, but hey, we'll take them in 16 here. Obviously, because we had nine less new houses, the value of the new single-family home construction was down about 1.4 million. Did want to note, interestingly though, that average new construction, single-family home value did increase from 2014 to 15. It jumped from 184.4 up to 195.9. So about a jump of per new home average of $11,576 approximately. So it's kind of a good sign that the general value is up on each of those new homes. Ninth year in a row, we didn't have any new town home or multifamily units constructed. And I think a lot of that, you've seen, we have a number of units that D.R. Horton built in Prague Estates, kind of a Horizon Drive, and then the rest of them up in Raven Stream, up by the Water Tower, some other D.R. Horton townhomes. That really saturated our market when those were built, you know, between 10 to 14 years ago. And I still don't think there's a real big demand for those. There's actually lots near the ones in Raven Stream. There's six lots that can hold 42 more units. You know, maybe in the next five years, we'll see those start filling out again, but I don't think there's much demand for that beyond that, that we already have as a stock in town. So not really surprised by that at all. Regarding commercial and industrial permits, again, reduction from a little over 1.1 million in 2014 to a little over half a million in 2015. Some of the bigger projects in 2015, there's some renovations done at the Bush Brothers Building in the Industrial Park. The old, what was one of the buildings Neil Dorndus had been at, and at the Industrial Park at the corner of Sixth Street and Sixth Avenue, actually had a pretty decent addition to it for a company that manufactures field drags. So that was a nice addition to the Industrial Park, utilizing a vacant building. Couple other things to note, the new concession stand at the baseball field shows up in the commercial alterations, and then a window renovation permit at Raven Stream. Now for 2016, and I've noted this before, the state is actually retaining review and permitting authority for the pool addition and the larger renovations that are going to be going on at the CEC building here and at the middle school. So we'll not be seeing that as revenue and/or permit stat data for New Prague locally. We will get permit pulled for things like re-roofing windows, boilers, et cetera, that are a little less value. State has really taken back some of the review authority that they've had years back to keep the revenue at a state level. We are more than capable to do the reviews of these larger scale building projects like the CEC or the middle school addition, but they're not delegating that out like they used to. So we only have what they call small permit authority at this point. So, you know, a little disappointed in that. They could choose at any time to delegate that back to us, but as of right now, and they've indicated this to the school, that they'll be doing the full plan review and permitting for the CEC and the middle school projects, so.
So when they do the permitting and planning, they obviously get the revenue?
They get the revenue.
But we do not get any revenue of that?
Nope, because we won't be doing any permit review or inspections on those larger projects. We would have loved to have had it, but...
Even if it's in our city?
Right, right. They have the ability to keep these larger projects under their purview. So unfortunately, that's where that's at. But we will get the smaller projects and we'll see a bump in revenue accordingly due to that. So it's obviously work going to be done at Falcon Ridge and some minor work that we will be permitting locally.
Ken, for the council's benefit on that is that that's not all segments as far as residential, commercial, or industrial. Is it in because it's the governmental?
Yeah, school projects, hospitals, that type of construction, they typically will hold on to those reviews, so. I don't know if you're council members, maybe about two years ago roughly, we actually had a document that came through for review that we got some of the smaller plan review back from the state, and it's up to a certain dollar mountain, certain projects. But this is above that threshold, so.
Did we?
Only a year and a half ago.
We didn't budget that in for revenue?
We did not anticipate that.
Okay.
No. Just wanted to point that out so we come to next year, ask about it when we do our permit updates, why you haven't seen that on there, that would be the reason why.
I'm sure Mary Jo will put a little footnote.[424.78][424.78](laughter) Just to keep us.
I should note, we will still collect water and sewer access charges, and we still do engineering review, public works review, et cetera, for those permits, so. That's really all I have for the report for 2015, and it's actually fine that activity is down a little bit. We've been implementing our new building permit software to have online permitting and everything, and we're getting there. We're going to have the online portion here shortly in 2000, early 2016. We just got a couple of little bugs to work out internally. You know, myself, Chad, Mary Jo are banging our heads against the wall occasionally, just getting little bugs worked out. But it'll be a good system. People can apply for and be issued various building permits. You know, if you're at 2:00 in the morning and want to get a roofing permit, you could do so at that time. So very close, so we'll be rolling that out.
They can apply for a permit at that time.
Apply for a permit and be issued a permit. Once we review it, obviously, you know...
Well, if Ken's up at 2:00 in the morning...
And we're not up at 2:00 in the morning doing it.
And gets his little, you know, app on his phone, he can review it and...[492.12][492.12](laughter)
Let's say they're up again at 2:00 in the morning, the next day, they can pay for their permit when we have the whole system up and running, so it'll be a good thing for everybody.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Jo and Ken. So next on the agenda, I guess you had your little, was it a little warmer when you did your walkthrough, or did you wait for the coldest?
Still pretty cold. I did go out, it was above zero at the time. But yeah, on January 14th, I did complete our annual building review of commercial and industrial properties and then around kind of the periphery of New Prague as well. This is the same report I've generally been doing, and this actually goes back to days of Jim Morris started doing this over 10 years ago. Just basically take a look at any new businesses that are operating in New Prague that did not prior to the 2015 year, anything that closed, any changes. You know, some businesses move around different locations, we'll track those. And then we track vacancies and vacant lots and things like that, so. Very comparable activity over the years as far as new business openings in 2015. We had 15 new openings. Compare that to 14, we had 18 new openings. Now, these are businesses that would be, basically that didn't have a public-facing entity somewhere within New Prague or our general periphery, right outside the city. So a couple to note, Farmhouse Market is kind of the organic and natural food store, opened up in a vacant space on Main Street. Shopko Home Town obviously opened up in the location that Alco was in that had been vacant for actually a fairly short amount of time. Tracker Management, that trucking company, opened in the old H&amp;W Implement Building that had been vacant for a number of years, other than having an auto repair place in there. I noted it before, but Ron Industries opened a building in the Industrial Park that had been vacant and made a substantial investment to add on a production area. And then just another one to note there of a smaller business example, Russo Diversified Wealth Management opened a location in Randy Kubis' building on First Avenue Southeast. So this kind of gives you a smattering, there's a lot of things you don't necessarily see, and I don't always pick them up on the EDA. It's a monthly report until I actually go out there walking around and, you know, going into buildings and asking about changes. Sometimes I don't catch everything, so those are just some of the notable ones, certainly not at all the full list. And we'll have this on our website too, if people want to take a look. Business closings and changes, we had 19 changes or closes in 2015. Compare that to 2014, that was 21. So again, right in line with that. Some of the changes, obviously, change in ownership of the Bros Hotel and vacant lots that are adjacent to that. Polly's Pub was purchased and became Whiskey Business. Vintique moved to a larger location on Main Street there, if I create any smaller vacancy that could be available for other people. Second Skin Tattoo had moved and actually closed as well, their location out in the strip mall by Carboni's in that area. This one is actually really interesting. Secure Base Counseling Center is located in the St. Wentz Square, right west of the library. They're expanding and they're hoping to open up in February in the building where H&R Block is directly north of the utility building. And they're hoping to add 10 new jobs in 2016 and another 10 in 2017. These are very, very well-paying jobs. I think the figure we had given was, you know, $40,000-plus jobs on up. So that's a very good company. They're doing quite well providing kind of counseling services for the La Sueur County areas, their biggest client base. Fishtail Grill is under new ownership, and then there was a remodeling and some work done at Domino's Pizza. So just kind of gives you a general flavor of some of the things that changed. A lot of activity downtown from year to year, a lot of people moving around to different locations, new things coming and going. So very fluid, but right in line with where we've been the last few years, so just interesting to go back and kind of take a look at it over the years. And throughout the year, I'll get information from the chamber or vice versa on a lot of these things, and we do that monthly report with the EDA. Try to keep track of most of these, but my EDA report is pretty much only based on building permits. A lot of these that we don't note, or they maybe move into an office space, that they don't need a permit or anything, that's something we don't maybe normally catch throughout the year. In addition to the...
Ken, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
On page five, the Prairie Pond.
Yes.
Did that lot, did the city own the lot, and then did they sell it to, did we sell it to Prairie Pond?
Yes.
Or that's what that transaction?
Yep.
Anything with Econo Food Building?
Yeah, we might be seeing some things moving forward here shortly. Not much I can tell you at this point. Yeah, there's a purchase agreement that Mr. Warner has with somebody on the building, and we'll kind of see how that plays out, hopefully sooner than later here.
Okay.
And then Ken, with you, the hotel, how did the lots change out? There was the vacant lot to the west.
Correct.
And then there was the parking lots. So how did that all play out?
So what has happened is Ms. Ampletz had combined, what was it, the Klondike Hotel, the vacant lots, the back parking lot, the hotel, and then what I'll call the gift shop building at the 210 address. We're all together at one property. Herman's purchased the property, they immediately split off, which is how it was to begin with, and I advise them never to do this, but they split off the Klondike Hotel from the larger conglomerate of properties, which I wish they never would have combined them together in the first place, because it's always kind of in a separate building and a separate operation, whether it be the house or whatever it might be used for. So they split that off, and that left the vacant lots, the hotel, and the gift shop building, and the back parking lot. In the most recent transaction, from the Herman's to the individuals, there's actually an entity name, and it escapes me right now. I think I might have noted it here.
Yeah, something like some Czech name for good friends or something.
Yes.
LLC or something.
I'm not even going to try to pronounce it, but yes, St. Andrew's Good Friends. And that is what they now own, and so basically the empty lots, parking lot, and the two buildings are under that entity ownership at this point.
So the vacant lot and the two parking lots went with the hotel?
Correct.
Got it.
Everything but the residence.
Everything but the residence.
Everything except the residence, okay.
Which is how it was before.[935.13][935.13](laughter) And it should have stayed that way, but they had combined them together for some odd reason, so.
And hopefully something will come out of that.
Yep. And then I did include our vacant lot inventory here for you as well. Just noting, not a whole lot of change in the commercial lots that are available from last year to this year. Obviously added our industrial park lots onto the listing. And again, this is information that is on the city website, should anybody want to look at it. Actually, it will be on the website, I haven't posted it there yet until you got to see it here tonight at the council level. And then finally, the vacant residential lots. And I'll note that we have 223 vacant residential lots in the city that are ready to develop at this point with utilities, or not develop, ready to build on, with utilities and everything readily available. It's about a seven and a half year supply at our current rate of new home building, if you're at like 23 houses a year roughly. If that picks up more, probably still pretty comfortable five-year level of homes, which is a good level. Obviously, every lot you have down to the end won't fit everybody's needs, so may start to see some other Platts come in, you know, in a few years here, but it's a good, healthy supply at this point and a good variety even today. So I think we're in a good position as far as that goes. I mean, we had been up over nearly 400 lots when the economy soured, so it's not a bad place to be right now. A lot of other cities that don't have many lots left.
Any questions for Ken on his great job of taking inventory of the facilities, the lots, commercial lots and residential lots in the city? Great job again, Ken.
Thanks.
You for keeping us up to date on what's going on. Next on the agenda, last week when Mike called me and said, Chuck, we don't have anything on the agenda. So I thought, oh-oh. So I know that we kind of talked about when we had the public hearing in regards to the pool, that we wanted to kind of start the conversation in the first quarter of 2016 on the actual current pool and kind of what are the city needs and wants going forward in regard to that. So I kind of prefaced that along with not only the pool, and I also looked at, kind of looking at the athletic fields in total with what are the future needs of the city and even the school district. And Mike, maybe you want to start off by telling us your conversation you had with Tim?
Well, I talked with the superintendent, and as the council recalls, Jenna and Amy may not recall, but back in early 2014, excuse me, the council initiated a process where we spent, I think it was January, February, March, and into early April, taking a look at a number of issues from the swimming pool to athletic facilities, recreational facilities, and those pieces in the community, and went through a lot of public analysis that was prepared by the planning and public works departments. And in that discussion, as we were looking at all of these elements, that's when the school started their process to take a look at the analysis that they went through within the district, taking a look at the middle school and some of their facilities and the need for a swimming pool. And so the council put ours on tabled action on the athletic facilities, because as the school went to get involved in the facilities there, they didn't want to take the time to continue or to really initiate a whole lot of discussion on athletic facilities. And as the council was looking at the swimming pool issue, the question was, is, well, let's see where they go with their process there, and you know what that led into in all of our review in 2015 and the decision that you made this past fall. So I again had conversation with the superintendent in light of anticipated discussion with the council here this evening about returning to take a look at the athletic facility needs, both from the city perspective and the school perspective. And he said that if the council decides to move ahead, that they would be willing to jump on board, and he'd go back and talk with the school district about participating in any joint discussions, taking a look at that. So whether we look at softball, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, whatever it might be, is going back and re-examining the inventory of existing facilities that we have. What are those facilities used for, as far as what age groups are we able to accommodate, and specifically what needs are unmet? Then when you take a look at the participants and all these different activities and the number of teams, we need to take a look at where is that growth at at present, and what do we project that to be moving ahead into the future, using some of our population statistics to help us shape and determine what those needs are, and then beginning the exploration with the school district to determine, are those really city facilities? Are they school facilities? Can there be joint facilities to determine what you may want to do in the future? So if they're willing to come to the table and have participation and discussion, when you look at that one, if it is your desires to want to continue to go further and to review that. We tried to pull out of those materials that we provided to the council. We had about a two-inch thick book that we did a lot of review and work on, and I didn't go back and replicate all of that right now, but tried to pull some of the key areas that Ken put together that, because of his work with planning and the work with the park board, is that I had him generally, as we talked about, what were some of the salient pieces, and that's what I've attempted to include in your packet this evening, assuming that's the kind of discussion or direction that you're wanting to take a look at.
Didn't we also, at that, during that time, Ken, didn't we also do the survey? That was part of that?
Yes, yes.
The pool survey that we did send out and had that results in that booklet, as I recall?
Correct. Yeah, specifically on the pool side, is that the council, we had an updated analysis done on the pool, then we did our community survey, and then that's when the school got in-depth in their district planning, and you kind of took a backseat, letting that play out to see what came out of the recommendations of that school committee.
Right.
So I guess as we attempted to outline in our memo to you, that if you're going to take a look at coming back to review the needs of the outdoor swimming pool, the question really becomes is, if you're going to attempt to want to get involved with some community committee or charge them with taking a look at certain things, the important part is, what is you're going to ask them to specifically take a look at, or what would you charge them to do? How far back are they going to go into the review? And where might that lead as it relates to the long-term needs, assuming that, again, if based on your previous decision, at this point, you've not made a decision to completely go back and spend the $500,000 or $600,000 that I think was talked about in the pool report of needing to renovate and modernize some of those aspects? Do they reexamine that from a community perspective? If they do, do they reach the same conclusion, or do they come up with a different recommendation? Or do they take a look at something, what might be needed long-term? If you're not going to do a renovation of that pool, then what would you task them and taking a look at as to what's out there from a new facility standpoint and what might that entertain? So, you know, the whole analysis and what you do with the facility comes back to what you want to charge them to actually move forward to do. That's ultimately the direction that you want to head.
Well, obviously, the school wouldn't want to be really involved too much in the pool conversation.
No, the school has also inquired of us, and we're in the process of trying to begin the planning discussions on an attempt to modernize and update the city's joint powers agreement with the school. Councilmember Ryan is the link from the council to that process, and we're just in the process of establishing an initial meeting as it relates to starting the discussion specifically geared around initially the arrangement between the city and the school on the indoor pool. They're going to be going out to bid here, Ken, in February, early February. Bid's coming in about January 27 or 28, and then the school board would award contracts in mid-March.
Yep.
So they want to begin the discussions to take a look at the joint power arrangements between the city and the school on handling the indoor pool. I think based on our discussion when the superintendent was first here, is we also need to talk about, since they've coordinated and handled the staffing of the outdoor pool, we need to take a look at, well, how does that necessarily fit into that arrangement? And then the other part dealt with community education on recreational...
Summer recreation.
Summer recreation.
Is what it had been, yes.
And so the question is, is where do we want to go with that, and how does that relate? And in that process, whether it be that process or something different, Tim indicated a willingness on behalf of the school to take a look at school facilities in conjunction with what we're taking a look at, to make sure that if there are any opportunities, that we're able to jointly take a look at that long-term, so that we're each not proceeding in a separate direction and just meeting our own individual needs without some collaborative joint arrangement.
When you talk to Tim, how are they, when we discuss other facilities that are needed for fields and whatever, did the school, were they intending to wait on that? If we should push that off, or are they ready to do that along with the addition? What, did he say any preference?
Well, what we had the discussion on is that that got put on hold, like I said, when we did the swimming pool assessment, our survey, and then they started the community, the school district analysis, they decided that there was, at that time, they had too many things pressing with that part of the process to individually take a look at, if you go to the page we've got in here that lists all of our park inventory and the different facilities that are there, and then I think Ken had additional analysis following in behind there that showed what some of the various facilities we have and where we have needs, what standards are met or what's not met. And that's really all we looked at. We didn't really go into a lot further discussions with the school in sitting down from the perspective, and Ken deals with it more than I do in the parks and the planning, as far as the different baseball fields that we have and/or what the school has. What age groups can each of those facilities actually handle based on the dimensions and the field size and the number of participants we have? I can't sit here and tell you, and Ken probably has a better feel than I do, but also as well as the school, that if you talk baseball, if you talk softball, if you talk soccer, based on the current levels of participation and how that's changed and where we see our population going, is what kinds of facility needs do we have to address that level of population that we're seeing? And when you take a look at that, and we had quite a bit of discussion, and I think, Ken, is it, you did the analysis, that when we were taking a look at that, one of the things we talked about is just who is it we're trying to address and build these facilities for? Is it city population? Is it school district population? We have a lot of developments out around the perimeter of New Prague that all come in and utilize facilities that we have here in the community, that you've got some of the teams that are playing at St. Patrick and...
Union Hill, St. Benedict's.
But there's a lot that come in and want to participate and utilize our fields in the process, and so when you take a look at soccer and the softball and other things, there's a question that you have to answer, is that what population area are we looking at trying to serve as we do this? If we take a look at the city, it's one thing, versus if you take a look at the school district area, it's another thing. I know it sounds like kind of a daunting task to answer that question, but those are the kinds of things that, you know, again, going back and revisiting is what facilities we have. And Ken, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about any of the ones that we've got on this page that...
Yeah, specifically, I should point out here, as Mike kind of alluded to, the pages that show, you know, the ball fields and it says meets local standards, and I do have to point out that that is per our city population, if it meets a standard or not. And we talked about this with the community education programming and participation. We have roughly, based on data they've provided and we looked at before with the visioning process... We have roughly, based on on data they've provided and and we looked at before at the visioning process. Roughly one third of the participation in in community ed, this is kind of program wide, is one third is from city residents that actually live in the city limits. And then the other two thirds are from outside of the city limits that come in. So while our standards for a lot of these say, yeah, you know, we meet that. And that might be the case, but we have a lot more users that actually come in and are participating, particularly when it's part of not just community ed, but. Like I said, we'll have New Prague Youth Baseball Association has a New Prague name, but it's a mixture of kids that live in town, outside of town, et cetera. So you got a mix of of more than just the 7,400 people that live in town that are that are creating the demand for that. And that goes for any of the the facilities as well. And we know for existing facilities in this, we know what's available at the school and city facilities. So you know, some of these look like they might meet the the definition for the minimum, but in reality, they don't. Kind of piggybacking on that a little bit. Being on the task force for the school district process. Obviously, the pool was one of the top priority issues and that obviously made it through the referendum and everything. One of the other items that that was, you know, it was important and it kept popping up on the list for that that process was athletic facilities, but never rose to the top of, you know, being more important than educational. Type things or the educational buildings and improvements. It's always kind of there, but it never rose to the top, so. That might be something now that the referendum passed and some of those other high priority items are being addressed. That people realize there's a need, but it it just didn't make it to the top of 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 that level at that time when that process being done, so. There's still a need and again, these are just meeting cities' population standards, not kind of district use wide. So I just want to make that that clear for everybody, too.
Well, I mean, I think it looks like there's really two issues. One is is evaluating the athletic facilities in regards to everything except the pool. Because obviously with the indoor pool, the school district probably feels that that that's where their involvement is going to be and and not going to be at the outdoor pool. And then the the second piece would be the community pool slash or what does the community want for a new type of outdoor water facility? So I think I think they there are two two big issues that have to be addressed. I think the the athletic facility is is definitely with the conversation with Tim. Is definitely has to be a a joint conversation to sit down and and look at. To Ken's point that we're not just evaluating the city population needs, but we have to look at the school district. And being that the school district has, you know, we're using some of their facilities just as they use some of ours, you know, I think is is headed in the right direction. And I think that's the direction that has to take, you know, with the school district. And then from that, there should be some kind of, you know, if they want to get more of the, you know, like a committee with the school area population. To look at athletic facilities in total might be one way to handle it. You know, similar to what they did with the pool and that sort of thing and the adding on to the needs of this facilities of the school district. I think that would be one way to handle the athletic facilities. But on the pool side, I think that's something that we as a city need to address on our own. And how we handle that, I guess, is, you know, I'm open for suggestions. I I think at the public hearing, when the night that we made the decision, we did mention that there there has been no decision on the outdoor pool. Which there still has not been a decision on the outdoor pool. But what I recall, a lot of the comments from the public was. They would like to have an outdoor facility, not necessarily the facility that we have now, but more of a facility with splash pads and and. More of a water park type of facility than the the swimming facility that we offer now. So, you know, that's just my take on it.
I agree that there are two separate issues and I think the city should deal with the the decision on the pool. And then as the athletic feels a separate thing to deal with in correlation with the school when they're ready. But I think the more important thing is to start looking at the pool as to the options and I don't know. I know it was here, but a lot of the comments I heard were about the survey previously. And now that now that we do, we'll have an indoor pool is how has that changed the questions of what people really want? And I don't know if it's best to have start with a committee or start with a survey or have the committee start with a survey to see sort of what. Guidance to what direction to even start with with the pool.
You know, I think, and I Mike gave us all comments of of David's comments on on the issue, the email. But, you know, I think one of the interesting things is is that he mentioned here is in his on his community pool planning is to what extent will the city residents utilize the new indoor pool? Which is obviously the great unknown right now. You know, as far as I know, that's going to be open year round, correct, Ken? So, you know, that's something that needs to be considered also and obviously we won't that won't, we won't know that until 2017. When that's supposed to open, is it May, I think, tentatively or?
Around there is what they're shooting for.
Yeah, so. So I mean, I think we have some time to address. I mean, I I unless some people have some other opinion, I I think we'll probably. Continue using the pool in 2016 for sure. Because obviously, you know, the community ed uses it for swimming lessons and and that, you know, unless there's other opinions, you know. So I I assume we're going to plan to open it as as we have as we have in the past and 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 use the facility as it exists.
The questions that are going to come as you're raising is that 2016 is pretty much business as usual. Subject to we continue that, you know, we proceed knowing that some of those pumps and motors and the filtration system and other things. Are not in good condition, that they're old and they're aging. And so as we say, business as usual and we don't have any planned changes, something can go wrong. We get ready for Memorial Day and thinking we're ready to go and all of a sudden we have something break or just collapse or what have you. That we're really kind of at the mercy of that season, depending upon how well that existing equipment continues to to hold up. And it's not as if it doesn't get looked at for routine maintenance and repair and those kinds of things. But someone probably is indeed of major wholesale replacement. And if you're not going to do that, then you just have to bear and understand that something can happen during the course of the swimming pool season that that's out of our control. That could have a severe impact to our abilities to to provide swimming.
Well, and I think we've been living under that aura for the last few years. You know, I'm sure Glenn, you're probably just every year, when you turn on that pump the first time, you're oh, you know, please, just go, you know.
It'd be something, it'd be something pretty big that would have to happen, you know, sometimes, most times you can take care of a pump, you can take care of, you know, things like that for not a lot of money, so. But, you know, you're right, we have been living underneath that same kind of black cloud for a few years now.
Right.
The plan is to open it in 16 and cross our fingers.
But the next question that comes from there, that'll have to be part of the joint powers discussion, is that as they begin to open the indoor pool in 2017. What staffing considerations are we going to have that the school has been performing that and providing those services? And the question is, is how will we work that out in the joint powers agreement as to being able to to do that when that's ready to open? And Ken, they're thinking the end of 16, early 17 maybe?
Probably early 17.
Early 17. The question is, is what are we going to do for that summer? And do we end up, how do we end up duplicating the staff for the summer months for both an indoor pool and an outdoor pool? That'll be one of the big questions in our joint powers discussion that we're going to have to take a look at. And I don't know that I can answer that right now, but that certainly will be one of the big ones that we talk about because the school has done that through community ed. We certainly don't want to have to or really aren't set up at this point to take over that function independent of the school. And if you're going to handle lifeguards and training and those kinds of things, it certainly doesn't make any sense to have the city be doing one piece and the school doing another piece. But can you collectively, under one joint jurisdiction, can you hire enough staff to run both facilities simultaneously in the summer?
Well, I think logistically also you have to look at, okay, obviously, the swimming lessons being held at the outdoor pool now will now be at the indoor pool. So that may limit how many hours that outdoor pool, you know, might even be open.
It may change the use.
Right.
Change the timing.
You know, so, yeah, there is a lot of logistics that has to go into that, you know, coming 2017. If we make it through 2016 mechanically. But, you know, I think that's just one issue that has to be reviewed. But I think also really what are the the wants and of 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 the people from New Prague? And I think that's where we need to get the community involved, you know, so that, you know, we can kind of come up with a game plan for the future. You know, you know, is it something that we keep limping that pool along until, you know, something is decided or a decision will be made that we're going to build a new facility in. Five years from now and and, you know, once the indoor pool is is open and, you know, we close the outdoor pool, whatever, the decision is made until that new facility is made. You know, I mean, I I think in obviously, we'd have to go to referendum if we wanted to, you know, build a new facility and, you know, so.
Again, depending on what kind of financing you choose to finance it, that there are those that do require referendum. There are other ways that you can't do it without a referendum, it's just.
We just talked to Shakapie and just see. See if they can float us alone through something there, but.
So, Mr. Mayor, it it seems like we have almost like a a needs assessment that we need to do on a lot of different levels. One is the pool. I think sometimes we don't even know what we want because the pool isn't operating through the school right now. So some of our needs might be met that way, but I think it's important to get a group together to at least start talking about it and assembling it because it all takes a lot of time. I think we also have facility needs, meeting spaces. I mean, we're just out of space. I mean, I know the city hall is being considered to or at least looked at on how to needs of the city hall. Would that be an option, too, to kind of make this more of a needs assessment for facilities? The pool facility, the athletic, as that comes along. And I'd also like to throw in our trails. We've talked a lot about trails for a number of years and the needs for trails. But it would be nice to maybe have this group or a subgroup of them work on some of the recreation needs.
Well, I guess it'd be similar to what the school district did. Ken, don't you think if we would get a a cross section of of people and and then.
Could be.
Put everything on the table and then have people prioritize it and say, okay, you know, what do you think the highest priority, you know, should be? Should it, is it, you know, trails or is it an outdoor facility, pool facility? Is it a new city hall, you know, or, you know, try to look at that. I don't know. Is is that something you're suggesting or?
I thought it would seem practical to look at the whole before we're trying to get one element of a pool or or athletic fields. I think it would give us more of a opinion or an inventory of the what we have and what our current needs are and how long those all play out.
But you have, one of the things that I would just offer is you have such a diversity as you talk about trying to put that that whole grab bag of things on the table. Is there there's such different and diverse elements with each of those different things that I'm not certain that when you look at the level of expertise and analysis needed to look at some of those independently. That you're going to find that that one group can do a an evaluation with all of those elements at the same time. That when you talk about the the trails and recreation athletic facilities, there's some common denominator with some of those things. The pool that, you know, we have a pretty good assessment of what the current and existing issues and costs and range of issues are there. Whether you choose to fix any of those elements versus the decision is no, let's take a look at something new, that we're not going to spend that kind of money. And make that level of an investment that we want to look at something new, then that kind of takes you down the path and the process that's kind of identified in this process. But this really has nothing to do with evaluating the needs of the city hall piece where we've got money in this year's budget to do kind of a conditional assessment of what is the actual condition? Based on its age, when you look at windows and heating and cooling and other needs, what do we have from an office space needs? That we need some of that information to determine as you look at that is that. Does it make reasonable sense to do any kind of rehab and is there sufficient space on the site to meet those long term needs? Or again, you need to take a look at another alternative, that being something of a new facility on another site or something of the nature. So I don't know that you could just necessarily throw them all on the table, get your arms around saying this one super group takes a look at all of these issues.
And I agree with you, Mike, on that one group might not be the expertise on that that whole group, but there may be a subgroup that comes out of there. But I think if we look at the whole of what's the facility needs, first, if we take just city hall out of there and a group gets together to talk about city hall. But there's a lot of community needs, I think, within city hall.
But when you say facility, I think you need to distinguish between building facilities versus athletic or recreational facilities.
When I talk facilities, I'm talking mortar, bricks and mortar.
Okay, but when you take a look at that across the city, when you, if you look at the inventory of what we have in most of our operational needs. Other than city hall, I don't think when you look at all of our utility needs, when you look at the library, when you look at city hall. I don't think we have a pent up demand need for a lot of brick and mortar needs in the community.
Yeah, I think Bruce was just saying they might add a.
He's got a small addition that we take a look at for the utilities. We may have a need depending on what ultimately happens at city hall, where we might go with the parks department and city hall and whether you bring some of the outline pieces into the city hall. But we've got new water treatment facilities, we have new wastewater, we've got up to date electrical for the most part. So we don't have a lot of brick and mortar needs in in all these different areas.
But is there needs in the community that we don't even know about? I mean, so those are the city operation needs, but is there needs within the city that we're not meeting of the public? If it's groups or spaces or I don't even know because.
I think part of that analysis comes in when you ask that question is whether, how those needs are currently being met at the present time. And that is how are we using city hall because that is the only public owned building that we have to meet those needs, other than a little bit at the library. And I think that's where your question comes into place when you take a look at specifically the city hall or the government center is is that. How is that being used for city operational needs versus the other public element needs? And is that adequately being handled either there or at the library or through schools or other buildings that exist? Is how those needs of the public are being met that way? I I'm just saying from the city operations, like I said, with water, electric or wastewater, most of those fire department, most of those brick and mortar needs are being met and have been met in other ways. So you 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 could make it very, a very large and unwieldy issue to get your arms around versus breaking it up into kind of subcomponents. And as you look at that, where does the higher priorities lie in looking at all those? Because they don't all need to be evaluated at the same time. I think there's different levels of pressing need and. And based on historical discussions with the council as to what you want to attempt to address. And we can carve out different solutions maybe to figure out how to work on those different facets versus maybe just lumping them all on the table and trying to deal with it all in one within one group.
I still think going back to the pool, I can see that the need for those other things. But I guess in my mind is the pool, we know it's going to be a city. There's no, there is any partnerships, the school, we're partnering with the indoors, so the outdoor one is only the city residents. So to me, that would be something that could be looked at. Now, the other ones seem they're larger things that there would need to be collaboration either with the county or with the school district on. But the pool sounds, 2017 sounds like a long time away, but it's really only one season we have yet before we need to make a decision. It takes a while to make that, so. before we need to make a decision. It takes a while to make that. So I guess my opinion would be to go ahead with the pool, to get that evaluated and to keep these on our, you know, maybe we need to have another visioning and look at our goals. I know before we looked at it, that was, Sean wasn't there, Jenna wasn't there, at least sort of lay out a timeline again of some of our projects and goals.
Does everyone concur that maybe we should start some kind of a pool task force?
I think it's a little too early yet. I mean, we still, you know, without this new pool, the indoor pool opening up, you know, the staffing issues, I mean, this is such an evolving thing. We can't even get the seven people together to find time to get our first meeting in. And, you know, we limp through the pool this year. The biggest piece is the boiler, which is two years old, right? Three years. You know, so we shouldn't have an issue there. I think everything else on the outdoor pool is probably pretty small.
Filter.
Filter.
Yep. Filter fails, we're done.
It is, okay. Well, it is what it is. You know, we've decided, we've made the move to go to this indoor pool. And I think we've already talked, at least in the other council with, David's not here tonight, but with David, and when Mark and Pat were on there, too, that there wasn't, there didn't seem to be an appetite to pay $600,000 or more to get that outdoor pool the way it's running. So, you know, if it fails, it fails, I guess is my point. I mean, all these things sound great, but they're really expensive. Don't we have two new, two new soccer fields coming online this spring for Settlers Park?
Next fall.
Or next fall?
This fall, I'm sorry.
Or this fall?
Fall of 2016.
Or three of them. So that'll help. I know that the park board will be, Amy will be getting some information from the park board as far as the baseball, youth baseball. When I was on the park board a few years ago, it was, I think it was February or March, when they sit down and start divvying up those parks for the games and everything else. So that would be a good time to get that information in, to find out if we need another ball field or two ball fields based on the participation level and what the coaches think. They're the best resources. I think that we, instead of opening it up to the public and getting all this feedback, we can just go right to the coaches, and they can tell you how difficult it is or how easy it is, if it is easy, to plan the games and plan the practices and have some type of cohesive schedule. So, I mean, there's, it just seems a little early to start a lot of this stuff. I, you know, a decision will have to be made eventually, and I don't know why we can't make it fairly quickly. You know, we are the representatives of the community, too. I don't know if we need to, sometimes those small groups, you get the people that are really into it, but it's not, they have their own agenda, and it's not really a broad spectrum of the overall community. And that can skew those facts and figures a little bit. So, I mean, ultimately, we need to get out there and talk to people and listen to people and not necessarily rely on small groups. I just, and it's painfully slow. I mean, it just seems like it's meeting after meeting after meeting and things getting rehashed and rehashed and whatnot. So as this evolving thing, I think we're on the right track. Let's get the indoor pool open. Let's find out, at that point, where the need is, if we even need an outdoor facility. And then we can start putting facts and figures to it, and whether it has to go to a referendum or not, and where we're going to find that money in the budget.
Okay. Well, obviously, we have a lot of different comments that have been made. I know Mike and I have to go to a meeting at eight at the fire station. So, you know, I just wanted to start the conversation tonight.
Way to go, Chuck.
But, you know, I think, you know, I think we need to come up with a plan. I think maybe we should, you know, maybe not, the February 1st meeting, I think we have a lot of things going on with a couple of public hearings and some closed-door meetings. But maybe the second meeting in February, we can bring it back up and maybe come up with kind of a game plan that we can agree on. I understand, I see Sean's point. I mean, you're kind of in the unknown, because no one knows how much the new pool, indoor pool's going to, people are going to utilize it in the summer. You know, and until we know that, it's hard to make some decisions on a new outdoor facility if people are liking what they see. But, so, if that's an agreement, we can, you know, I know that we started, we wanted to start the conversation in the first quarter, and that's kind of why I brought it up. So I think it's something that we can table till the...
This continuation of this back on the February 15th meeting.
Yeah, in the middle of February, because I think we have a few things already we have to take care of on the first.
Are we going to even have a joint powers by then?
By when?
By the 15th? Weren't we at the...
You're talking, you're talking a process here.
No, 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 no. I know the whole process. Are we going to even have our first meeting then?
I believe it's...
And I don't know if Amy could, will have some park board information on the baseball stuff yet, as far as...
They will not have submitted any fields. We don't really look at that annually. Well, they'll have their schedule probably to us, well, it has to be to us by April 1st.
Okay.
So that's when we'll know. That's usually not that different from year to year.
That's what I was just going to say, that we go through that analysis...
I couldn't remember what, if it was March, February, when it was...
Here, and we've got a good handle on what those needs are, but it comes back to, as we talk about, where are those playing teams coming from? And just how many facilities are you going to make available, either city or school district-wide? So the data you're asking for is, you know, we've got a pretty good ongoing dialogue of what that is. There might be some minor tweaking of that that comes in, but we're not expecting significant changes.
The most thing we comment, feedback we hear are soccer fields.
Yeah, right. And we have three new ones coming online. So is that going to be enough? Or do we need 13 more? I don't know. I mean, until we have it and can utilize them, it's hard to say.
And that comes back to that question, is what do we have for soccer fields? And what age groups are we able to address? And what are the number of participants that we have in that area? And as you look at that, then you can begin to answer the question, are those enough or not?
Right.
Kind of what the whole athletic field process is about, and trying to determine whether you can meet those community needs or not.
Okay. Well, thanks for everyone's comments. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or issues on anything in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Okay, passes four-zero. Miscellaneous, anyone have anything? Except for Glenn was supposed to be at the welcome table when we were coming in today, but he couldn't get his name tag over there fast, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have one quick one for Mike. Any word on our ordinance for our pending...
We've been in discussion.
Okay. Any movement on it? Can we expect something?
Not as fast as I would have liked.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have any comments? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Amy Jurick.
Second by all.
Third by, third by Janet Tuma and fourth by Sean Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Thank you, everyone.